For joining us, this is the January 8th, 2015, meeting of the East Fishkill Town Board. This is a work session, and if you would join, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We've done a, we've made a few changes. We've moved our meeting time from 7:30, as it has been for many years, up to 7 o'clock. The other boards all meet at 7 o'clock. We thought it'd be good consistency-wise, and just made a little more sense to start a half hour earlier. We've also changed, I'm trying, I'm experimenting with the room layout. Previously, we had the table this way, everybody on one side for the camera, kind of didn't want to work that well, so we're experimenting. If this doesn't work tonight, you might see actually the table next meeting diagonally or something like that. But we're trying to foster better conversation, having the professionals at the same table and such. So we'll see how it goes. Like I say, who knows where the table's gonna be next month. That being said, I did want to make one announcement for tonight. I got, I got an email, and I saw today in the Southern Dutchess News, that the blacksmithy shop that Elwin Hyatt had donated, because Elwin had had a blacksmithy shop on his property for many, many years, from when it was a blacksmithy shop. He donated to the East Fishkill Historic Society. The blacksmithy shop was moved last week, and I do want to thank, obviously, I want to thank Elwin Hyatt for donating the blacksmithy shop. I haven't been in there, but I believe it was actually, could be a working blacksmithy shop, so this is very impressive. And, and the gentleman that helped move it, and that was John Pereskeva, helped move it, Dave Kaler helped, and a gentleman named Doug Weck from the Golden Bridge Company, and they moved the, the, the blacksmithy shop from Elwin Hyatt's property to the Historic Society property that's located, and I'm not sure the road, but it's in Kensington Park, it's off, off of Palin Road. And I gotta tell you, we have the, we have the coolest Historic Society in the town of East Fishkill. It's kind of like a hidden jewel. You have the, the original house that's there, then you have the bar, the carriage bar next door, a lot of carriages around. You have the Ice House, which was just moved over there last year. They have a working, an old one-room schoolhouse there, and now they have the blacksmithy shop. I gotta tell you, our Historic Society is just a really, really wonderful project, and I gotta hand it to Historical Society for everything they do. And if you ever get a chance to go out there, they have events, or just go on their website, but it's a very, 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 very nice project, what these people are doing. And one thing I would like to say, one of the issues, because you have to go into Kensington Park to get to the Historic Society. But I'd like to look, and I'm not even sure if this is actually possible, I believe there used to be an old road out to Palin Road. I would be thrilled if we could reestablish your old road to Palin Road, because that would sort of give the Hist- Historic Society its own space. You know, now it's a little odd going through, through the development to get there. If we can get a road to it from Palin Road, I think it would be just phenomenal. But no matter what, please, go see the Historic Society. It's just a wonderful, wonderful exhibit of a lot of old buildings, and, and they do a great job, so. That's what I want to say, and I did want to thank the people that moved the, the, the blacksmithy shop, and thank Elwin Hyatt, because that's a terrific addition, so. That's really all of my announcements tonight. It's the first meeting of 2015, it's hard to believe we're starting 2015. We don't have a lot on the agenda tonight. We're gonna be talking about some concepts I'd like the board to, to get comfortable with, understand, and, and we can talk about tonight. As ever, if there's any questions about anything we're doing, you can, the board can always stop, see me, make an appointment, we can always meet with the attorney, the engineer, the controller, talk about any, any of these things that we're doing. So with that being said, I'm gonna open the work, the work session, and the first item of discussion tonight is the zoning amendment, the workforce housing law, and this is mending Local Law Number 6 of 2012. Tom, I'll leave this to you, our town attorneys with us, and just give us a little explanation of the changes from the old law to the new law, if you would.
Certainly, and as everyone's aware, under the terms of the settlement agreement we entered into, one of the first steps is to revisit the special permit that's already contained in our zoning ordinance with respect to workforce housing. So what we've attempted to do in this is to bring us into compliance with various directors of the New York State Court of Appeals that started in the late 70s, right up through the current date, that requires local municipal zoning ordinances, towns and villages, to have a full array of housing available, not just single-family homes on large lots or appropriate lots. So keeping that in mind, what we've attempted to do here is by modifying the legislative intent of this section, we've recognized the tri-county study, which was performed by Dutchess County, Orange County, and Ulster County, which studies the regional needs, which is one of the criteria by the courts, and is allocated to the town of East Fishkill, a requirement of approximately 185 units. What we have further done is analyzed the existing housing stock in the town, and as the board and the residents are aware, there are certain multiple-family rentals in the town. We discussed it actually with the town assessor, who worked with us to determine that on a regular basis, there's probably about a 10% vacancy rate in those units. So we further reduced, by recognizing the fact that these exist, we've reduced the, the number that would be required, and we're down into the range of about 110 units that could be authorized by this special permit. Based on some of the information received during the course of the public hearings, we've recommended to the board to consider increasing the minimum size of the lots that this permit could be applicable to, so we're raising it from five to 10. It, it brings together, all of the public hearings would now be consolidated and be before the planning board for consideration. We felt that the, the way it had been originally set up, bifurcating the public hearings, lended a lot of confusion to the whole process, and if amended and enacted, this, this special permit would only allow the creation of 110 units under this. And it's set up that would have the town board, when the next regional study comes along in five years or so, to analyze that and to decide if the adjustment to the criteria here is then required. So other than that, the other density requirements, spoke regulations, et cetera, have really been left intact, and we have made, you know, some definition changes, things like that.
Thank you, Tom. One of the things, too, I'd like to point, and it's just a funny thing about our town and many other towns and villages in Dutchess County, we evolved in basically building single-family houses. That's what we had, we had a lot of farmland, we built single-family houses. Hopewell Garden Apartments was built in 1963, probably completed about two months before zoning was actually adopted in the town of East Fishkill. Wildflower, the, I believe they're condominiums.
Townhouses, but they're, they don't comply because they're for sale.
And they, and they were actually brought into existence through a special, special enactment from the town board in, in 19, I believe it was 89. So what has happened is really, and this is the crux of the issue with our law, is that as of right, we don't allow multifamilies and such as that, and that's kind of our problem, and this is what we've been trying to rectify. Actually, we've recognized this years ago, because there is all, a single-family houses, there's no attached housing. So we've tried over the years to address it. This year, it's become an issue. It has become an issue, and I think that by making the changes from, from the comments that we've gathered, I think that this law will serve to satisfy the federal and state regulatory agencies, and also, I think it'll actually satisfy a need in the town of East Fishkill, which I've always said was that, you know, some people can't afford a, a brand-new house or, or, or a house, but they need that stepping stone. Or, on the other hand, I have a lot of seniors that still come in, and they say, you know, I'm really tired of mowing my lawn, and so it's a stepping stone up to a house, and for some people, it's a stepping stone back down to something that they don't have, the maintenance issues, and that's, you know, what I see filling a need in the town of East Fishkill, so. But that's my thoughts on it, and I'd like the board to, you know, any questions and any thoughts or comments, we'd love, we'd like to have a little discussion.
How many areas going with this are really, like, eligible to get this?
Yeah, there would be, by increasing the minimum lot count, there would be three. One is the proposal across the street, and the, the one that was the subject of it would not be eligible under the change in the criteria. And then there, there is possibly two other parcels on the other side of the hamlet, but they're further away from water and sewers, so those are issues that would have to be And quite frankly, just if this is permitting up to 110, if the cross street is approved at 88, I'm not saying, but if that's the proposed number, that would only leave you at 22, and that's not going to probably come together into another project.
So this is, say, 210 total for the whole?
110.
110.
Under the current regional assessment, it would be 110 for the town to bring into compliance with the current regional assessment, but that regional assessment is updated every five to eight years by the three counties, and then they would contact you and tell you what the then current.
So the 110 doesn't count the apartments that people have in their houses?
We already did.
We already, we went, we took that out of it. 185 is, is our assigned quote.
The original, yeah. Working with the assessor.
And then through this discussion, we feel 110 would be a defensible number to, to satisfy the court that we've taken into account what we have without excluding.
Tom, could you give us a little bit more explanation regarding the cost? He says, I believe, page five, the units will be assessed after the town recreation fee in lieu of the land, the less credit, I mean, what is that?
Right. Under, in our current zoning law, anytime a property is subdivided, the only impact fee New York State allows is a recreation capital fund contribution. So our law already has, for many, many years, provided that that rec fee is $6,000, except for any building that's built as an affordable unit, it's $3,000. Okay? So that's already provided. Additionally, under the current state of that process, if a developer of any type of residential community develops onsite facilities, that they have to, that has to be evaluated and considered in determining the full amount of the recreation fee.
And that's a state, state law?
That's state, that's the only impact fee the state legislature allows a town to impose.
Yeah.
And now it's all cluttered with all of these issues that have to be addressed.
And the thing is, and one, and, and some of the units, I believe some of the units that satisfy the criteria, was that law passed back in 2002, when we did affordable housing in the developments, like the 10% set-asides.
Correct.
And that established, I think, some criteria for the reduction on the.
And that's, and that's really the genesis of it. The town board in 2002 has a set-aside, any, any development of more than.
Oh, I forget what the number was.
Twenty or 25 units, has to have at least 10% of those units affordable, but they are purchased, they're not rented, so it's, that's a different issue. But in like the Hopewell Glen development, which is 290 units, there are gonna be 29 affordable units. I think some have already been advertised and processed, and so in those cases, the rec fee would be $3,000, as opposed to the six on the other units. That's correct. And also, Four Corners, I think has.
Twenty-five.
Twenty or something like that.
Something like that. So this is something the town has been working with, but we're, we're moving it along with this, with this law to find ourselves in compliance with federal and state regulations, and that's, that's where we need to be. But again, also, I say, I, I feel it, it fills a need in the town, so. Any other questions, any thoughts?
Just to comment that whether or not we agree, that's the law, so we have to comply with the law. All municipalities then, Tom, are in violation if they do not allow as of right to have.
A mixture of all housing, rental, purchase.
So just because in all these small towns like ours, that we mostly have single-family, we're in violation of these laws.
Right. And the litigation, obviously, is in Long Island and in Westchester County, and the, the same groups that brought that litigation are foiling information in Putnam County, gathering it, so it's certainly gonna keep.
It's moving.
Inching its way up this way.
I mean, I believe we're probably the first town in Dutchess County.
And the problem that the board of municipality faces, because I represented the town, they had this problem, is that if your ordinance is challenged, the court voids your entire ordinance, and it gives you a very limited time, usually six to nine months, to fix it. And so that causes a lot of angst and turmoil to try to resolve it at that point.
Does it void your entire zoning?
Yes.
So the whole 194 tractor would be gone?
Correct.
Wow.
Okay, and also, the other question I had was, we reach our goal of the 110, it would comply, or we would reach the goal of the regional study, if we came close to that 110. In 2020, when they do a new regional study, then we'd have to amend the law again.
You would have, the town board then would have to review that study, the state of housing stock in the town.
Whatever the new number is.
And do similar process.
And look at other parcels and same thing, okay.
But right now, that number doesn't go over 110.
110.
That's it, so we have.
And the proposal before us is 88, so that.
So that's 22.
Correct.
And we have to meet that, that 22 has to be met.
Well, I mean, we, we don't, we don't have to go out to seek anyone to build them, but we have to at least have an ordinance that would allow that if somebody came into development.
But as Hopewell Glen says, say, gets more built and they are set aside.
Those units, those units don't satisfy this requirement.
Oh, they don't.
No, because they, they are at purchase.
Oh, yes, that's right.
They are not rental, okay, so that wouldn't satisfy.
So they weren't even calculated in the reduction from the original number.
And Tom, what, what criteria do they usually use, the original, is it the census? Is it, what do they use to?
Oh, the studies, the, the regional studies? Well, they're usually done by experts, like the one in Westchester was done by Rutgers University, and they, they take census tracts, they, they take a housing inventory of all the communities involved, all the counties, and they come up with the needs assessment. Okay. So it's a very extensive process that they do. And just, I just want to be clear, too, we're recommending 110, that's not etched in stone that that's gonna satisfy the courts, because they might, if anyone challenged that, but we're comfortable that we have a rational reason not to do the full 185 because of the things I mentioned before.
Obviously, you know, if, if you have any other, any, you know, any questions, come up with tomorrow, next day, feel free to stop by, give us a call. Tom's always available by phone or here at the Town Hall, and we can always discuss it further.
I just wanted to mention one other thing. I, oh, I think I read in this amending law that the Fishkill residents have priority, and we had an issue with that, I remember.
And if I may, we've talked about that, because legally, we can't say East Fishkill.
So should we omit that from this, or?
I think it's prefaced by. Where it's, it's, yeah, it's prefaced, it says where the law would allow, okay, the.
But we've discussed this, I mean, obviously, we would like to see the needs of East Fishkill satisfied first, obviously. By law, you really can't discriminate, but I believe that we talked about, you know, how we would get the word out and work to have everybody in the East Fishkill interested. Also, Tom, I believe that that is just for an interview, that is not for a unit.
Correct. Maybe we should just discuss that process. First of all, in most communities, when, when the development is at a point where it's about ready for C of O, et cetera, there will come a time when the application window will open. So what most communities do when a development like this is being built, is they start to gather names and information from residents who wish to be considered, so that, and they're even, as soon as the applications come out, they're provided with them, and they're, they're assisted in making sure they get their information. So if it comes in and the developer receives 88, if, I'll just use 88, just for, if he, if they get 88, then they're gonna go through the process with all 88 applicants to review their credit, their, well, everything that they have to go through. Not all 88 may be accepted, because they may not meet the standards, but then again, they might. Then if there are 200 applicants for the 88, then a lottery is used to determine the order that they consider those 200 applications. It's not a lottery of a pre-existing list. I know there were some people who thought there was a state list, and people get picked off from Buffalo or the Bronx or whatever, that's not so. The only random lottery is if there are more applications than the 88 units. And remember, 20, if this project, 25, were a set-aside for abilities first, so you're talking about the 60 some odd.
That's gonna be left over.
Correct.
And again, the lottery, if there was a lottery, would be just for an interview, so that you could be interviewed.
Correct. That's just to line up the order of, of consideration, and once they, they get the first 60 some odd, they start the process of background checks, credit checks.
So that's to be fair, so they, they show that they were.
Correct, right. However, statistically, other communities will tell you that by getting your community the applications ready, et cetera, you usually have a significantly higher amount of your local residents or relatives of your local residents' applications in the pool, so even if there is a lottery, just by odds.
So we can help facilitate.
Correct, and that's what most communities do.
So we'll be setting up a list of, anybody's interested, if the project is approved, you know, we'll be taking a list, getting the applications ready for everybody, make them available, so.
And this, the proposal that's gonna be before the planning board, it's workforce, you have to have work, unless you're a senior retired or one of the abilities first clients.
Any other questions, any other concerns, thoughts, comments tonight? Anytime, as I said, you know, feel free to contact any of us, make an appointment, stop by, give Tom a call.
Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you, Tom. Second on the, on the discussion tonight is something that just had recently come up, oh my goodness, I think it must have been October, November, I believe it's October, we were going to approve, we actually approved the bonding for across the street for our, our Cannon Property Wellfields, which are going to be constructed to service areas in the town, and potentially the Ryan Drive, Hopewell Precision Superfund site. So we've done a lot of the work over there, and we're to a point where we need to start getting funding for that project as far as hard engineering and get to work on building the facility over there. So we had actually approved a bond, I believe, for a million dollars to that effect back in October, November. Now, we know that Toll Brothers will be one of the purchasers of the water from across the street, and how much did they, they were gonna contribute?
950,000.
$950,000 towards the project. EPA has expressed an interest in their water supply from there, and they will also contribute an amount, I believe, over a million dollars. So we needed to do, we needed to put out some bonds so that we could have our money to get the project going, possibly, we were up to a million, up to a million dollars in borrowing on the bonds. So we passed a resolution, we sent the resolution to bond council, don't really know what happened, we sent that up and we waited, we didn't get a response from bond council. So, Tom, I know you called bond council and had a discussion, and during your discussion with bond council, and he's reviewing his, their, their files, they had a suggestion about, you know, we do a lot of these projects, we do a lot of water sewer projects, we, we do upgrades, we, and we plan to, especially with this project, connecting a lot of our systems together, and, and our, our bond council had a suggestion that instead of forming a district, doing a bond for every district, or what have you, that we should consider townwide water and sewer improvement areas. And we looked into what I see Wapinter has, when we actually found a file from 19.
93.
Was it 93?
93.
Yeah, where the town actually had gone forward with council at that time to form a townwide water district, or, a sewer district, yep. So there's a lot of advantages to forming a townwide water and sewer district, there's a lot of flexibility in, instead of creating the district and bonding for it, now, and I'll let you talk about it, obviously, Tom, but in, in a townwide sewer and water improvement area, you can do these connections, you can do these upgrades, but under the townwide umbrella, but the people that benefit will be the ones that will pay for their portion of the bond. The bond will be portioned to these certain areas. Tom, if you want to correct me, or if you want to talk about it at all.
Well, basically, as the board knows, when we first talked about the Cannon Wellfield, we were talking about it as an enterprise fund. In other words, that it's gonna be self-sustaining, and the purpose of having an enterprise fund is that it's going to supplement the water supply of our other existing water districts, and those districts would only pay for the water that they use. So the enterprise fund, the controller will tell you, is the accounting setup, so that only those drawing the water, you're collecting the money, even though the debts with the general fund is all that is in the town, whether it's for a water district or not. So bond council thought that the town of East Fishkill is matured and is sufficient size, and it seemed to be doing these things to protect the water supply, and also with the sewer, you're adding different sewer areas, that his recommendation was that the board establish the townwide water and sewer improvement areas. And it's a tool that would be available, because some of you will recall, about four years ago, the town board voted, and the town became a suburban town government, which kind of changes, it modernizes many of the, the powers of the town board. So what, by establishing these now, when projects come along, like if you're going to need to interconnect a system, so it's not really in this system or that system, it would be a function of the improvement area, there's always would be public hearings, we're not cutting out any of that, but it's a simplified method, that you don't then physically have to map these improvements. There will come times that after some of these are built, you determine that, you know, it's a large enough area, and you'd make it its own district, but it's, it's a tool. It's a complicated theory, but the state legislature, you know, many years ago, provided for this in the town law, and bond council certainly recommends that we do it to streamline the process in the future and make things simpler for bonding, et cetera.
And if I could add, the problem we run into with Board of Health is that with a district, with a finite boundary, you know, oftentimes, a, a single entity will come forward and say, we'd like to connect to the district.
Yeah.
You know, or connect up, but they're outside the district boundary, and it's just a big process between DEC and Board of Health to try to get them in.
So what this tool does is, and that's a good point, is that with the Hopewell Hamlet Water District, we have many properties that are outside the district that would like to connect, okay? Right now, they can't connect, because we don't have the water, but we will have water for them, but to connect them, to go through the cost and expense each time of expanding the district, is very costly. So with this mechanism, if it's in place, you can allow them to connect, they're still paying the sole cost of everything, and then maybe when you have 30 or 40 of these, you would modify the district at one time when it makes sense, okay? So it's a different tool for you to be able to do that.
Yeah, and I think it's a very versatile tool, it allows us to do things, you know, just thinking if we had to connect, we talked about Revere Park, their connection, where that's gonna be, I mean, and then we're gonna tie the Hopewell Glen Water System in, down further, down towards, I know, Fishkill Plains Water.
But then you have, they have the Church Street area, you have the Frankie's Market area, you have all those areas.
So there's a lot of these connections that we can make, instead of, again, forming the district and doing that piecemeal, we can actually put it all together under, under the umbrella of the water, townwide water improvement area.
Correct.
And I would also say, and Tom, I, we've talked about this, any projects we do, obviously, will be approved by the town, any expenditures up to the, the amount that they allow will be approved by the town board, so it's not gonna be like we're gonna get a blank check and just run out to all these connections, you know? The town board will be involved every step of the way, but it just gives us a lot more flexibility as far as how we can put these things together, so. It seems like, I mean, we were happy to hear that there is a tool like this, and ironically.
Well, Wapinter has used it for years, like they have the Tri-Municipal Sewer District, and they have a sewer improvement area, and basically, the sewer improvement area enabled them to run the lines, to, to take many separate sewer districts, you know, like their own Sagamore District or Four Corners, connect them to one trunk line. The trunk line is owned by their town sewer improvement area, yet each of the sewer districts that are connected to it pay the shares of it. So it's, the people using it are, are paying for it, but it's a shared facility by many different districts, so that's how it comes under the umbrella of the improvement area.
Okay, so if there is an area that we purchase another, say we purchase another water and sewer area, and then we're gonna enter that into our enterprise fund.
Right.
Right, our enterprise. Now, the people that were in that district only pay.
For the, right, that's correct.
How about if that system we buy is also going to help other systems with, I don't know, redundancy or whatever? Now, it's a benefit to other neighboring systems, do they pay a share to? Now, it's a benefit to other neighboring systems, do they pay a share to?
Anyone who uses it, has a benefit from it, has to pay a proportion of share.
Okay.
But if you live, say, in the mountains of Somvo or Wickapie and you don't have a central water, your tax dollars are charged towards it.
Understood, understood, okay.
And we, we.
Does it make borrowing easier?
Yes, it's, that's basically what bond council felt, it gives you greater flexibility because, like the Cannon wellfields, it's, it's probably going to be like a four million dollar project, three million dollar project, something like that. You're going to get money in from Toll Brothers and from EPA, but you got to build it. And that money doesn't flow in maybe in the same, at the same times you need the money. So this gives you the tool to be able to finance it, as you said one time, Peter, like a line of credit. And then it's paid back, but all of that is spelled out when the board approves any individual project. You spell out what the cost is and where the revenue's coming from.
Like a new construction.
Correct.
And we, I'd also like to see if we could do that for sewer also, it just makes sense. We're going to be doing the Route 52 Sewer Project to create a more of a diverse business climate down there. We need to bring businesses in down there, we need sewer down Route 52.
We need that.
And that will be an investment that we were, we're going to, we're contemplating actually forming that district. And then, again, going through that whole single district. But possibly, if we can, if we can do the townwide improvement for the sewer area also, that would help us along with that. And then we can bring the sewer up from up 52 and it just gives us, again, a lot more flexibility to the funding and the, the design and the, the shape of the district.
So if we did the water and the sewer, then we wouldn't have to do a Route 52 corridor sewer district, it would be an improvement.
Not immediately, not immediately, right.
At some point, yeah.
Well, I, I understand, but it's important.
Yeah.
I just wanted to press that it's important to put the sewer down that.
Oh, hugely important. The, the people that are in the district would always pay. But we wouldn't formally form a district until we had enough of them together. But from day one, when they hook up, they would pay their, their, their share of it.
So this is a tool, like the town engineer said, so that we don't have to go through asking permission many times, but once we put this in place, we'll be able to do all these changes.
We just have to demonstrate we have enough supply or enough capacity.
It gives you much more flexibility and you can do things quicker.
Right.
Which sometimes is necessary if someone has a failing water supply.
I, I understand when we borrow the money, between the time that we borrow and we put it in place and we start getting some revenue from the people that are using the system.
Right.
And we have to pay their money back.
Right.
I guess the whole town pays that back, correct? In other words, we've got to stop paying that loan back. From the time that it's borrowed to the time that it's actually, that we see some revenue to balance the books.
But that's built back in, you are right, is that while you take the money out, you may have an interest payment or something until the construction's finished. But the way it works then is that when the project is finished and you do the final borrowing for that project, that money's reimbursed, so the general fund.
The carrying charge.
And then the, the carrying charges are built in.
My point is, we do not have to increase any taxes to the general population.
That's correct.
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 Okay.
Any other questions on it? I mean, when we talked about.
The process would be, is at the next meeting, you would set a public hearing for February. And then the public hearing, there'd be an explanation and.
Yeah. And typically, we do a map plan and report, but in this case, we don't do the map.
Correct.
We just do the plan and report, so.
So we're saving money, Mark, saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But again, it's a very, a very good tool for, for helping us with our infrastructure needs, so. And, and again, any thoughts or questions? Scott's been working on many of our water sewer districts with the engineering department and the clause, and we'll be revisiting this in the near future, so. But any questions, or Mark is here, Mark's the one that's going to have to do all the billing and stuff, so, but I know he's up to it.
I have another, and I, another question, regarding the, when they passed the resolution and it was passed, East Fishkill being a urban town now, what is the difference, benefit or not, between what we were before and what we are today?
Okay, with suburban town government, it gives the town board greater management abilities, moving people around within departments, personnel things. It more clearly defines the role of council people versus the supervisor. It gives you foolish little things, but more flexibility in making certain changes that the state allows.
Yeah.
They.
I think it came up with speed limits.
Correct.
Was one of the issues.
To do a school zone, you can do it as a suburban town government, but you can't do it as a non-suburban town government. So it's things like, I can get you a, a listing of it, I don't have the list committed to memory, but I can certainly give it to you.
Any negatives besides all the positives?
Oh, no, no, it's, it's like the, what happened is that the town law, when it was adopted back when, after the state constitution was amended in the sixties, as time went on, the legislature realized that, well, first of all, you have to have a minimum population of twenty thousand. Then the legislature realized that as towns grew over the twenty thousand level, there was a need to have a little easier system of governing. And so they adopt, they enacted this section called suburban town government in the town law. And town boards are allowed to adopt it and, and this town board decided to do it four or five years ago.
Yeah.
And it really came to light over a.
A speed limit, school zone, yeah.
And then we, you know, I had always thought the town board had previously done that, and they had not, so we cleared that out.
So we did that.
But I can give you a list of.
Okay, that's. All right, and speaking of map plans, reports, we've been doing a lot of work with the EPA on the Ryan Drive Hobo Precision Superfund Site. There have been, we, we, pretty much weekly conference calls, except around the holiday season, we didn't have the conference call maybe for a couple of weeks, generated a lot of information for the EPA on the project. We don't have any set dates, any set guarantees or anything, but the newest thing that came up is we, is we've gotten an email and what the EPA is asking for us, and this is part of the issue, as soon as we get all comments, the, about, they are asking us to, to do a map plan and report, forming the Hopewell Precision, well, I'm not sure what we're going to call that water district up there, but forming that water district, the boundaries, distribution areas and all of that, costs and everything. And that will be, as they claim, that's going to be a step towards getting them closer to, to realization of this project. As close as they can get to being shovel-ready, the more well-regarded the project is going forward. And I'm not sure, I, none of us knows when the timeline is, when they're going to say this is a funded project or not. But we were getting a lot of, a lot of push from the EPA to get as far as long as we can with this project. And the fact that they're asking for a map plan and report, and I think.
And they're paying for it.
And they're paying for it, and the EPA is paying for it. The only, and, and I think they're asking for us to adopt a map plan and report, set the public hearing, accept a map plan and report and accept a public hearing in two weeks.
Well.
That's what they're asking.
We're not ready to adopt it.
No, no, they, they want you to at least receive the map plan and report.
They want the town board to accept it.
And to schedule a public hearing at a future date.
Yes, that's why I said to accept it and to schedule the public hearing. Now, we know the EPA does not typically do map plan and reports, because they're a federal agency and this is New York State, so there's a little work to be done through their map plan and report.
Right, yesterday, we were all, the engineer, myself and supervisor, we emailed a draft of a map plan and report, which is reflective of the engineering, EPA is authorized to design it up to eighty percent. So that this is, would be, provide water service to three hundred and fifty-two homes. And it would be funded by the Environmental Protection Agency on the Superfund Site. Same process we went through with Shenandoah for the one hundred and eighty-nine homes.
One hundred and eighty-nine, yep.
So, but in order, as the supervisor said, for them to keep advancing to the next level of approval in the EPA, they need to show that everyone is, is marching along and moving along, so.
And in that case, there is a finite boundary.
Yes, and so when, once we correct some of the things in here, there'll be a copy for the board. And it clearly shows the service area and, you know, all the information.
The source and distribution and, and, you know, actually, this is a little bit of the issue that we have with the, with the townwide water improvement area, is we need to get funding for across the street. Because what's going to happen, Scott and I were talking about this before, if these things work out, we need to create our, we need to get our wells developed and producing across the street in a couple of years. And so this is going to be, you know, pretty hectic, but we do need to get the funding in place if this does happen.
So do they, does the EPA, it'd be nice if we would know.
Yeah. It's, it's quite frustrating, I know it's frustrating for everybody, but the fact we're having pretty much weekly conference calls with the EPA, their engineers, our engineers, their management, their, their, all their professionals, the fact that they sent us this letter, we need this map plan and report very quickly to help with the process.
And also, before the public hearing date, they're actually going to give us a letter of intent. That would be their intent to connect to the Cannon wellfields. Because we've explained to them that for the water supply to be available and reserved, we have to have a commitment from them before the town board can proceed on that. So we are working on a draft of that letter with them and hopefully by the.
With the timeframe, I'm sure, to get the water out.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah. They, they know that there will come a particular point in the Cannon wellfield design that they're going to, they're either going to have to say they're in or out, because you're not going to be able to.
Upsize the pipes.
Go beyond that without the commitment for the funding, because then it would be a smaller project.
Right.
So, very interesting, and I think as a newspaper article, Walter Mugden from the EPA in Washington said, we're cautiously optimistic. But as I assure the project manager Lorenzo Fantu, the town of East Fishkill will do whatever we can to, to work with EPA to make this project happen, and we will.
And you have been for ten years.
Yes, we have. Well, the, the one big thing was the, 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 the purchase of the Cannon property and the, and the finding that there are wells over there that can actually do this, so this is very, very good news. So that will be coming up and we'll see as we progress with the map plan and report, if we can indeed have it ready to accept and set the public hearing in two weeks, so. And I think that's it, anything else anybody would like to discuss while we're here, any questions or any thoughts? We're doing a lot of stuff.
When this goes by, when this water pipeline goes all the way up Ryan Drive, and then say, the phone company, just because they're there, if they wanted town water, because we got this other district, we can actually add them in if they.
Well, they're right on the border right now, the phone company.
Well, I guess the way to answer it.
Just a piece of property up that way.
I think the way to answer it is, once it's built and turned over to the town by the EPA.
We have a lot of flexibility.
Then, then you can enable that to happen as long as you have the water supply.
Well, not, not so much that, but this other district that we're.
Yeah, with the new district, right.
So if people down Trickle Lane want to get it, we can just add them in at that point?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Well, let me just get into a little bit of detail, we have to know how much supply would be.
There's capacity issues.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of variables, but as far as EPA line, it, just look at it strictly as a, as a transmission line. It will go past all these businesses, but the EPA is going to put storage up on the far end. There's going to be a booster station maybe around Old Farm Road. And from like that booster station to that tank, that's really that, that system that floats off the tank. Now, anything up to that point, we have to supply.
Right.
Feed off of their storage. Now we're back to how much storage do we have and how much can we supply? We're still using their transmission line, but, but it's our storage.
Down, like over in Pine Ridge or somewhere, one of the wells with, when somebody's house dried up over on the edge of one of the. No, a number of years ago, some of these houses.
Yeah.
That was just outside the district.
They lost their water.
They lost their water they wanted to get in.
Yeah.
And they, it caused, it, it put us through a lot of, we'll do our painful work and extra.
Well, I can say we do have a, a system Pine Wood off of Clove Branch.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm really saying is, he's not in the district.
Yes. But just, but Scott figured.
We can add him in though, now.
We'll, we'll do our best to serve this.
With the improvement district, he said.
With the improvement district.
Yeah, oh, with the improvement, yes, yes, yes.
It affects that.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm not talking about the townwide area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we still have to have capacity.
Yeah.
We still have to have, we're going to have source capacity and we're going to have transmission capacity, but now we're left with storage capacity.
Right.
So it's really going to be a function of storage and, and filtration.
But if, if we have those things, you're absolutely right, you can just add them in.
You can just add them in.
Well, let's go back to what you were saying about Pine Wood.
Well, now Pine Wood, in their analysis, we knew that in the past there'd been problems with Pine Wood, so we asked them to increase their pipe size.
EPA.
EPA.
Yeah.
And their storage capacity and everything on their end.
Yeah.
To take care of Pine Wood should the day come, we need to connect.
And I forget how many some.
And a few other fringe areas.
Something like that, yeah.
Which they've agreed to do, so.
Can we tell them Worley Homes is up that way?
Well.
If we could have figured that out, we would have.
Yeah. And we've also looked at Worley Homes, believe me, we, we know the problems with Worley Homes, it's owned by a private company, so we really have no jurisdiction, issues with, with Worley Homes have to be taken up with the Board of Health or the Public Service Commission, which oversees the rates. But we certainly understand that in the event that Worley Homes wanted to purchase water from us, I think we would do our best to make that available also. But again, it comes down to, well, we have here is storage and supply. And we're talking about storage doing a clear well underneath the.
Clear well or a combination of, I mean, we're kicking around different still options.
We looked at the, the tank in the park, if we needed to.
At one point.
Put another ring on top of that. So there's, we're always looking at ways to make these things more efficient. And we have, we have a lot of options, so we'll do our best, so.
And if everything is in place, what is the timeframe between the time that EPA gives us the funds and actually the water going to that Ryan Drive, so that.
Well, I can't speak to their.
The draft of the report, they're projecting twenty seventeen. So two, about two years.
And we figure at least eighteen months till when they get the shovel in the ground.
Well, that's, that's really the timeline we have for Hopewell Glen right now. And if, and if there is development across the street, it all falls into that seventeen timeline, which means we need to be building in about a year.
Yeah.
Which means we need to be finalizing our plans in the next maybe six months.
Yeah, and again, it comes down to the funding and why it's very important that we were to establish the townwide water improvement area, so. But luckily, we have a lot of good water in the town of East Fishkill and we can, you know, do the work, so. Anything else, anything anybody would like to talk about? Okay, with that, we can get to liaison reports. If I may, I'd like to start, I'm the liaison to the East Fishkill Police Department. And I'd just like to say, you know, I've spoken to our chief and things are going very well at the East Fishkill Police Department, very proud of the men and women, new dispatchers in training, nothing out of the ordinary, they're just doing their job and they do a very good job. One of the things that I was very concerned with, and I spoke with the, the top staff at the East Fishkill Police Department, was the, the, the very terrible tragedy that happened to those two officers sitting in their car a few weeks ago. You know, how did it affect our people and we, and, you know, I know that there was a lot of discussion and memos went out in the police department, you know, our hearts go out to those officers and their, their families. And our people just need to be more, be, and as they always are vigilant, know what's going on around you. And, and I got to credit our East Fishkill Police Department, they do a terrific job. But nothing out of the ordinary, they're just out there every day doing their job and I want to thank them for it, so. That being said, Peter, liaison to the Highway Department.
Highway. What they've been working on a lot lately is.
Catch basins.
Cutting trees. Oh, they're still doing catch basins, trimming some of the trees, catch basins, and thank God, very little snow.
Yeah.
So we're looking good that way. The new freightliner trucks they got, they're very happy with them.
Good, good.
Very happy with the new trucks they got, a lot less problems. And then I guess they dug, Dennis was actually at the town, the septic test pits.
Yes, we did.
How'd those go?
Well, we're looking at potential of putting in a fill pad section, kind of in the front of the parking area where he stores the catch basins and things like that.
You've got no catch basins left.
You know, the general area, it would have to be a fill pad section.
Yeah. And just so everybody knows, we had a septic failure at the Highway Department and we're trying to find a way.
And the Police Department.
And the Police.
And the Police Department too, yes, true.
Right, right. So what we're thinking is we could potentially then pump the police station to that point as well. We'll have to come down the DOT right away in front of that one house right there. It's two separate parcels, we may have to combine parcels in order to accomplish that, because Board of Health does not like you to pump from one parcel to another, you know, the town owns both, so we may have to combine lots.
Do you think that pad would be big enough for both facilities?
What we've done is we've done the test pits, we still have to go back and do some percolation, but, you know, kind of based on visual of what we see, you know, we're kind of, you know, hopeful that'll work, but we still have to go back and do a perk test.
Lot of rock over there.
There was a lot of rock.
Lot of rock, a lot of rock to the police station.
And clay, hardpan.
Oh, wow.
That's why we're looking at bringing in a fill pad.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So there'll still be a pump station involved and a dosing chamber involved.
Mm-hmm. What do you think that project was?
But the next step is to do perk tests and see exactly how big an area we're going to need.
Yes, and again, it comes down to, when we talked about the three hundred thousand dollars, that we, 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 we didn't borrow three hundred thousand dollars, we, we have a bond to borrow up to three hundred thousand dollars. And it is to repair the septics for the Police Department and the Highway Department, or can we connect to the sewer? Which, yes, we can put in a fill pad and that may actually be cheaper, but if the cost is to a certain point, I would prefer we looked at a sewer, because then you're done.
Right.
You know, we're not, we're not talking about this.
We're not at a point yet of finalizing.
We're not at a point yet of finalizing all those costs.
Yeah, but, but, well, see, we'll see how it pans out, though. All right, and I'm glad the freightliners are working out, I know we've had some issues with those, we switched internationals a few years ago, quite a few years ago, and I'm glad the freightliners are working out, so.
Said he'll never own another international.
I bet he did. Very good, very good. Councilman Alessandro, planning board, zoning board.
Planning, zoning, back in action. We had a successful educational session in December with our planner, Michelle Robbins. I got some feedback from some planning board members, and they were very happy, they would like to have more of those. Our zoning board, I wanted to ask our attorney, how's the Article 78 going with the cell tower application, and maybe you can explain what Article 78 is to the public, so we could clarify things.
I guess about a year and a half ago, I guess the zoning board had before an application for a cell tower along the Teconic Parkway, and after very extensive public hearings, not only from the public, but the town also had a radio frequency engineer that was hired to analyze submissions, et cetera, and after much thought and based on the evidence, our zoning board turned down the application. The applicant then brought a lawsuit, which is in the nature of Article 78, to review their decision. However, since it's a cell tower, the federal government has taken control of that issue, so the case is pending in the United States District Court for the Southern District of New York, it's assigned to Judge Karas, and in December, see, the 12th to the 18th, were oral arguments before Judge Karas with respect to the issue. And what we found interesting was that Judge Karas normally has his decision done, and he hears oral arguments, and the next day, the decision's released. However, I think the, our argument with respect to the lack of a thorough study of co-locating on another tower over by the Sylvan Lake Tennis Club persuaded the judge, perhaps, to reconsider, because normally, it's, it's a very slim chance you have to prevent a tower that meets the federal standards. So I think he's at least pondering that, we have not yet received a decision on it, we should shortly, and then based on that, we can talk one night here to decide if it's favorable to us, obviously, the applicant may want to appeal it, if it's not favorable to us, we'll review it and see if we would like to appeal it to the Second Circuit Court of Appeals. So that's the current status.
Okay, so we're waiting for the judge.
Correct, as always.
Two things I'd like to point out, if I may, on that. Number one, originally, the cell tower, whoever wanted to build, the cell tower company wanted to build it, I believe, on the tank site at the Little Switzerland area, and the, the residents were not happy, they did not want a cell tower in their area, so we did not entertain that on behalf, because the residents told us that that was not what they wished to happen. But I do believe the cell tower company found a resident up there that owned a certain parcel of property.
Correct.
In that area, and he, he actually said, "Okay, I have no problem with it being on my property."
Right.
So now, this cell tower, if the judge overrules us with this Article 78, may go on a private residential a lot in, in Little Switzerland, so it'll be interesting to see what happens. Hopefully, we did hire a radio frequency analyst, and he's engineer, and I've heard very good things about him, so hopefully, we can prevail in that. When we talk about an Article 78, I mean, that's really kind of the same thing we're facing across the street.
Correct.
I believe we have an Article 78 as part of the, the several lawsuits against the town of East Fishkill for the Joe's Mothers' Road project. So, Tom, if the judge was to look at the case and decide against us, if, if, if the developer and the other complainants went forward with their case, and the judge was to decide that they ruled against us, actually, that project could go back to Joe's Mothers' Road.
Would be at Joe's Mothers' Road.
And we would have not, there's nothing we can do about it, because it'd be the judge's decision.
Correct.
So, that's, an Article 78 can be a little bit concerning, and we've always done very well with having a good, a good basis for our decisions, so hopefully, in the cell tower.
And our most famous one was Phillips Road.
That was, that, with, did the, how far did that one go?
That went to, they asked permission to appeal to the highest court of the state, which was denied.
Wow, wow.
And the town board was upheld.
Yep, and boy, that was a tough one, so we appreciate that. Anyway, moving on, Councilman Marinello, Hillside Lake Special Park, Hillside Lake Special Park District, any, any news?
Basically, everybody had a nice Christmas and a nice New Year. We are, they are waiting anxiously to see what their grant application result. Hopefully, God willing, that will solve a lot of problems in that community, so, besides that, I mean, to this point, I have nothing to report.
Holiday season.
Yeah.
You know, gets us a little slow. Thank you. Councilman Franco.
Recreation. Leagues are holding registrations and preparing for the spring. Opening day is April the 11th, it's a bit warmer today. And Scott, if you could correct me on any of this, but Lee Town is going to be shut down for the spring.
Definitely for the spring and summer, we'll see about the fall.
Maybe the fall, and there's just a few things left up there, the clay and a little touch up.
We have to finalize the clay, tighten it up, and whatever final touch up, they did do a seeding in the fall, we'll see how well that germinates, it may have to be reseeded.
Oh, Scott, you got to do better, you got to be open air.
Have you seen it?
Astroturf, you got to spring for astroturf.